Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March, or the March 22nd, 2021 Special City, City Council Meeting, and it is 4:31. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ms. McGrew, will you call the roll, please ma'am?
Mayor Bill Hastings. Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Rory Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Jordan Stockdick.
Here.
And Councilmember Dusty Thiel.
Here.
You have a form.
All right, thank you ma'am. Tonight, we have Pastor Darren Walter with the Current Christian Church, who will offer our invitation. Following that, we will have Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem Chris Harris, give the pledge to the US flag, followed by Rory Robertson, who will give the pledge to the Texas flag. Pastor Walter?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. To have you here tonight, thank you for attending.
Thank you, my pleasure, honored to be part of it. Let me pray for us. By the way, thank you for another opportunity to come together, and we ask your blessing on the council, the mayor, and those involved in tonight's proceedings, meeting. Lord, as you know, leading a city is no small task, and the decisions made, some in small details, they'll make a big difference, and we pray that you would give wisdom and guidance to each participant tonight, that you would help them to make wise decisions, that would be for the good of the people and the good of our fair city. I pray, Father, your blessing on Katy, Texas. We pray for the end to the pandemic here. We pray for parity and health in our businesses, our business community, education, law enforcement, and so on. We pray for peace and goodwill among our people, and we pray for your blessing, so that we could honor you in return. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Walter.
Thank you.
Amen. Man, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but this is the first time I've seen my pastor in nine months.
Hey, brother.
Well, y'all can have a reunion if you want to hang on after the meeting.
Good seeing you, Pastor.
If you don't talk best, then you can forget it. All right, Chris, will lead us in the pledge to the US flag.
If y'all please rise. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it's one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead with the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Rory and Chris. Moving on to item number three, public comments. Like to remind the audience that they have three minutes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. If you would like to participate, please press star nine to raise your hand, and Ms. McGrew will let you in. And we ask that you would give your name and address before you speak.
Seeing none, ma'am.
All right, seeing none, we will move on to item number four. Comments from the public on any agenda item. And once again, if you would like to speak, please press star nine, raise your hand, and Ms. McGrew will let you in. Once again, please state your name and your address, just for the record.
Seeing none at this time.
All right, we will move on to number five. Number five is recognizing Saturday, April the 10th, as Keep Katy Beautiful's Don't Mess with Texas Day Trash Off. And we have a proclamation here, given by the city, to keep Katy beautiful. Keep Katy beautiful, City of Katy proclamation. Whereas each year, Texas and Keep Katy Beautiful host the Don't Mess with Texas Trash Off litter prevention program as part of the Great American Cleanup. This one-day event is part of the nation's largest community improvement program, and allows community members to make a big difference in their hometown by picking up harmful litter and debris along the roadsides and local parks and other places in the city. Whereas Keep Katy Beautiful, an affiliate of Keep Texas Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful, hosts this year's annual community trash off. Local volunteers from all walks of life and all ages will come out for the fun-filled event to pick up litter and debris. The event will also collect recyclable materials such as electronics, paper, cardboard, yard debris, oil and paint, scrap metal, appliances, and wooden pallets. Whereas the City of Katy encourages residents and businesses to volunteer and help make this hometown clean, safe, and beautiful for all to enjoy. Now therefore, as Mayor of City of Katy, along with the City Council, I do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 10th, 2021, in the City of Katy, Texas, as Don't Mix with Texas Trash Off Day. Proclaimed under my hand and seal of the City of Katy, Texas, this 22nd day of March, 2021, Bill Hastings, Mayor. And these ladies do a wonderful job with our trash off. Moving on to item number six. Item number six is the 2021 Bond Package Update. We have an update by City Administrator Byron A. Bear. Byron?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, appreciate it, council. This is to give you an update on Prop B, which is the park bonds. And that is, if you will remember, that is going to build a park administration building, the design and construction of the park administration building. The planning and designing and construction of improvements to parks and park systems, parks and trails. And just, just kind of keep, council, remember that the voters have to vote for the bonds. And with that, we will be able to then use the proceeds to do a study, to put together a plan, not just for one or two particular areas, but for citywide. And if the voters would vote for that, it would help keep the city connected and vibrant. So with that, I just wanted to give council an update. The way we're going to be going with the bonds, we hope the voters will look into that, and we will then be able to come back with a designed plan for the city, citywide. Mayor?
All right. We will move on to item number seven. West Ten Business Park Plan Development District, PDD. Item number seven, a public hearing to propose ordinance, amending zoning ordinance number 621, amending ordinance 2915, West Ten Business Park Plan Development District. This was approved by City Planning and Zoning Commission, CPZ, on February the 9th of 2021. We will go ahead and open the public hearing at 4:39.
Seeing no comments at this time, Mayor.
All right, we will go ahead and close it at 4:40. Item number seven B is consider an ordinance. Ms. McGrew, can you read the caption, please ma'am?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Katy, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 621, amending ordinance number 2915, West Ten Business Park Plan Development District, amending certain requirements and restrictions for development within the West Ten Business Park Plan Development District, providing a penalty of $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision of this ordinance, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for severability.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by court?
Okay.
By Dusty Thiel. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, a question, I guess this would be for the Planning Department. Is, is there a reason that we're changing the ordinance for the entire PDD instead of by lot within the development?
Yes. Or are... Yes, you, you have to amend the, the whole PDD. The PDD is a, is a plan, and it's a, a set plan. If you change it, you have to amend, you have to amend the plan. We, we do allow in the PDD for, for subdivision of lots, where it doesn't have to go back to the, to the council. But, but any change in the PDD must go back to council, because the council made special provisions, made special exceptions to our rules, and, and the council has to go back and make any changes to those special exceptions.
Okay, so in, like, art is, is this giving every owner within that development the right then to, to pave over the easement area?
Uh, yes. Yes, if they, if they meet the requirements, where they can, where it can, it can be done in a manner that doesn't interfere with the drainage, then yes, it would allow that.
Okay, and, and who's looking at that on the drainage issue?
We, we do, when, anytime when they go out to do it, they got, they got to get a, a site plan. Anytime they do that construction, and in that site plan, they're supposed to look at, they'd look at the drainage also. So when they do that, when they do the, the construction, they, they have to make sure that they don't change the flow on those lots.
Okay, and then I, I know, I saw in the amendment, they're clear that they will be changing the... If, if they change the pavement, and then we have to go in, they're responsible for the, the cost associated.
Yes, 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 for instance, some of those, some of the, some of the utilities or the water and sewer, they, they may, may pave over those, but if we got to go in and, and dig them up, they're responsible for, for replacing.
Okay, thank you.
Are you done, Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
So I had a question on the easement, and you mentioned, is it a drainage easement? Or does it also include utilities? In other words, is Center Point going to be involved or anything like that?
The, the only way Center Point would be, would be involved is, is if we're, if we were to be putting something in their easement or to pave over, pave over some, some of their, their easements. When, when we are, in fact, well, the owners actually own the easement, so it's, it's their, it's their easement that we would be paving over. We regulate that and say, we normally don't allow you to pave over an easement, but in this PDD, we will allow them to do that, if they can do so safely.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if it's a drainage easement or a utility easement, it's any easement?
Yeah, as long as it's a, a public easement, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's a couple of the questions I had from the public was, and I think it's hard to understand, it's really the property owner's easement that we're just maintaining. So just a clarification. Okay, thank you.
It's underlying property owner who owns it, and, and we, we maintain it and we control it, but it's, it's really the property owner's property.
Okay.
Is there any further questions or discussion? Having none, we will go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Chris Harris and seconded by Ms. Stockdick. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, item number nine, consider a resolution. Item number nine A, consider a resolution, Katy Fire Department Station One renovation. Authorizing the mayor to sign a supplemental work order for EZI QC by board contract number 520-16, Area C-LMC, for expanded mobile protocols for fire station number one renovation in the amount of $133,911.70. And authorizing source of funds, exchange order number one. Original contract awarded 12/14/2020, resolution number 1139, fire station number one, phase one. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Stockdick, second by Councilwoman Court.
There.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
What I'd like to add is that council considered this agenda item along with a budget amendment that will come at a later time. The original approved budget was $600,000 in December, but this is in addition to that, along with the second resolution in this Katy Fire Station also.
Andy, is that, is that moving money from reserve funds into capital?
Yeah, but in order to say, it kind of, it funnels through the general fund, and we move it over to the capital, capital fund.
All right, does he have, do we have to bring that back? Can, can we do that with a motion? Uh, no, no, we, we'll bring it back, bring it back when you, when you do a budget amendment, because the budget can only be amended by ordinance. So you just bring it back, you authorize it at this meeting, with this motion here, they authorize, they authorize this, and then when you, when you come back, in order to, to even up your books, you have to do a budget amendment. But we can move forward. Yes, you can move forward. The council just needs to know ahead of time when they make the authorization. That's what Andy was doing.
Since we have a budget amendment on this agenda, could they motion to amend it to add that as an exhibit?
They can.
Okay.
They can. You know, on this budget, thank you, you can, because there is a budget, budget amendment on this agenda. You, you can add that, when you get to that item, you can add these two items that are on, said for resolution, add them to that ordinance, today's ordinance. Yes, you can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so, so when we get to the budget amendment, we need to add items nine A, I, and double I as an amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Hey, Andy, can I ask a quick question now?
Yes.
Um. So you said this is going to come out of the general fund. I thought this was going to come out of reserves.
Yes, so the capital fund does not have a reserve? So the reserves come from the general fund? Did that answer your question?
It did, it's just my mind wasn't going that way, I don't know why. That's okay.
We...
It's just a general thing.
This is the first year we set up the CIP fund.
Right.
We, we, we budgeted for $600,000 for the fire station renovation, and these two items are, are in addition to that. So in order to originally fund it, it for $600,000, that is a transfer from the general fund. The general fund holds the reserve.
Okay.
We need to fund it from the general fund, the, the fund balance of the general fund, and move it over. So we've already approved a transfer of $600,000, now we need to approve, in addition to that, for these two items.
Okay. Thank you.
But, I'm sorry, you done, Jennifer?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, but we're getting reimbursed through the CARES Act for this mold remediation, aren't we?
Uh, don't...
Couple, couple of meetings ago, we approved, that was a different, different issue?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's a bond where we're getting reimbursed.
Well, we don't know, the voters have to vote, but...
If the bond, if the bond, yes, okay. I knew there was a reimbursement discussed at some point, so that's that public safety bond, okay.
And I'm just verifying, this is mold that was found in there once, the work had already begun, and they went back in and found mold once they tore out, is that what, that's what this is for, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to item number nine A two. Authorizing the mayor to sign five agreements for the fire department building repairs and upgrades. Authorizing source of fund EZI QC being board contract number 520-16, Area CLMC. New work order with Guardian Group in the amount of $175,793.45 for phase two upgrades and repairs. Reference number JSB-020-333 through JSB-020-377, 337, excuse me, with Graco Mechanical in the amount of $19,393 for upgrade and repairs. Proposal number RM-21-007 with Datacom and Security Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $37,900 for building camera upgrades. Proposal number RM-20-029 with Datacom Security Solutions, including the amount of $74,650 for the building readers and locks. EZI QC by board contract number 25092017 with Guardian Group in an amount of $7,967.75 for expanded project management services. Source of funds, zero for capital improvements plans, fire station number one, phase two. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion was by Janet Court. And seconded by Ms. Stockdick.
Yes.
Any discussion? Don't ask me.
Do they need to amend that to go with that ordinance, to make sure that it gets tacked on to that previous ordinance?
It don't come when we consider the ordinance.
We'll put them on at the end of the line.
Okay, great, okay.
No further discussion? We'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine B, discuss and consider proposed engineering change order number two for drainage and paving reconstruction projects on perpetual drive within Reston Terrace subdivision. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Harris, seconded by Court. Any discussion? Go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to item number nine C. Authorizing the mayor to accept an encroachment agreement for Metal Barn at 1303 Avenue C, Katy, Texas, from Jared and Melanie Carter. 0.4821 acres, James C. Crawford survey abstract 205, Harris County. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Court, seconded by Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine D, authorizing the issuing of unlimited tax road bonds, series 2021, by Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District, number 161, not to exceed $2,885,000, the reserve of Katy. Do I have a...
Second.
Motion by Harris, seconded by Stockdick. Any discussion? Not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine E. Authorizing the mayor to execute an engineering services agreement with Gravtech Engineering Services, PLLC, to provide on-call structural engineering services for the city facilities. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Court, seconded by Chris Harris. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine F, authorizing the mayor to sign a subscription agreement between Acid Remap LLC and the City of Katy for EMS protocol and client data mobile application services. Agreement was previously approved on September the 10th, 2018, and the resolution number was nine zero zero. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dusty Thiel, seconded by Councilwoman, Councilmember Stockdick. Any discussion?
I have some, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, first of all, is, is the cost going to be the same in 2018? It was like 2,000 a year, and then it was a three-year contract, so I didn't see anything in the packet, so I'm just wondering, are we renewing the exact type, same terms? Or have the terms changed?
Yeah, Kenny, can, hello Kenny?
I just asked IT to promote it. I don't see Dana on here. Chief, are you there? You're on mute.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I don't know if you'd be able to answer these questions for, I know Dana is the one that sent it over, but...
All right, what was the question? I didn't hear what the question was.
Any of this... Kenny, this is the subscription agreement between Acid Remap LLC and the City of Katy for EMS protocol and client data mobile application services. As the price, this was first approved in 2018. Has the price of that changed, or is it still the same?
I believe it's the same. It's the original contract, they just changed some of the wording, so they had to get it re-approved. As far as the funding and everything, it's been budgeted already to come out of our budget, and to my knowledge, the, it's the exact same amount as it's been.
Okay.
Okay, and will it be another three-year contract?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kenny.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Did that answer everybody's question? Okay, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to nine G. Authorizing the mayor to support House Bill 1910, which authorizes the use of a cemetery within the boundaries of the city upon application by a non-profit organization. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Court.
Second.
Second by Councilman Thiel. Is there any discussion?
Yes, me. Um, I, I read through what was in the packet, and I think I understand what this is, but could maybe somebody go into it a little bit better? Um, because I'm not quite sure what we're approving here.
Currently, Art, you know. Yeah, currently, under, under the law, council member, is that you, you, we're prohibited for a city our size are prohibited from either establishing new cemeteries or expanding some cemeteries within, I think it's over five miles or a mile from the city limit. So any cemetery that's located... cemetery that's located with, within the city cannot, cannot e- expand. What this, what this law would, would allow us to do, and we sponsored it last session, would, would allow for us if it's approved by the legislature to allow for us to expand, expand that Magnolia Cemetery. There, there are some future plans that the city has in mind of acquiring additional lots, and, and you cannot do that under the current law. So we, we need a, a legislative change in order for us to acquire any additional lots in the Magnolia Cemetery.
Okay. Thank you, Art.
You are.
Okay, no more, no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Hey, moving on to item number ten. Consider an ordinance approving amendment number four to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget, adding funding to hire a parks director. Ms. McGrew, can you read the caption on that, please, ma'am?
An ordinance of the City of Katy, Texas, adopting amendment number four to the original budget of the City of Katy, Texas, for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year, providing for changes in the general government fund budget for the hiring of a new parks director for the City of Katy, Texas, providing for severability.
Mayor, I'll make the motion with the amendment to add Katy Fire Station number one renovation as listed in nine A I and double I.
A second then.
A motion to add nine A I and double I to this ordinance.
Motion by Harris, second by Stockdick.
Hey, Art, I just wanna make sure we don't actually have to, um, list out the dollar amount, do we? On that amendment?
No, it's, it's based upon, based upon the, um, what was in I and double I. We're just gonna include them inside the, inside the budget.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Art, do we vote on the amendment or the whole ordinance as a package?
No, it's, it's on, on the whole ordinance. It's your, what goes in your packet is just a, just a, a draft. And so, so if you vote no, now, is, is the motion includes both I and little I and, and the, the, uh, director.
Okay. So we can go ahead and call for a vote now.
Right.
No more discussion.
Uh, real quick, uh, sorry, I'm just very happy that we're able to be hiring a parks director. Uh, we've made a real effort last few years in expanding our parks facilities, but we have Lion Decker Landing coming up and Rylander Property, so, uh, glad to see this, and, uh, I know it'll help the other departments that were kinda taking over the, the parks, uh, the, all the work that was associated with it. So glad we're at in this position.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number eleven. Uh, council members' reports, and we're gonna start with Dusty Field.
Uh, just a couple of things that we've gone over here is, uh, I just wanna thank Keep Katy Beautiful for Trash Off Day is a great event. I've used to get rid of computers and papers and so many different things there. It's just a great event, and I appreciate their help on that and sponsoring it. Another thing is Katy Plaza, went out there and walked around today. It's, it's really looking nice. Uh, it's, it's just a great addition to the city, and I appreciate all the work that's been done on that. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Stockdick.
Sure, um, I'd like to remind everybody that the city has the Baskets and Bunny Hop Along Drive Thru on Saturday from ten to one. Also, the following Friday, uh, April second, the Katy Heritage Society is doing their Easter extravaganza at Heritage Park. So it's crafts, um, egg hunt, Easter bunny face painting, and petting zoo. And then last but not least, just wanna remind everybody about early voting. So it's in-person at the Katy Civic Center at nine ten Avenue C, starting Monday, April nineteenth. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Robertson?
All right, um, Art, you know, first I'd like to thank Mara Hartzell, who's the Animal Service Director at the Rosenberg Animal Shelter, for hosting the council members and candidates last week. Not to speak for others, but I learned so much during this tour, and I can see where we need to go. Plus, she's volunteered to come to Katy and present the No Kill Philosophy to the Animal Advisory Committee. I hope we can get her scheduled as soon as possible. To build on what, um, Councilmember Stockdick was saying, um, um, just to explain that whole day on Friday. Second, I wanna make sure everyone knew about the Easter extravaganza on the second, from eleven to two at the Heritage Park. The Easter Bunny will be there for photos. We will have live music, crafts, petting zoos, food truck, and an egg hunt, so please bring all the family. Uh, and then last, I wanna tell you something about what's gonna happen before that. Um, last, I'd like to thank the Katy Heritage Parks Board for their complete support and approval of the installation of the Celia CC Rico Little Free Library that will be unveiled on April second at ten fifteen AM. I invite you all to attend. The Little Free Library will be named after Cece, who is a student from Katy Junior High, that we lost in January. Her passion for animals and reading, and this is a wonderful way to honor her memory and bring to light the negative effects of bullying, and to remind us all that it is okay to not be okay. A statement that we want to spread to help bring awareness to mental health. Hope to see y'all there.
Thank you, Councilman Robertson. Uh, Councilwoman Court?
Well, there's not a whole lot left. I'm, we'll add something to Keep Katy Beautiful Trash Hall. Um, yes, you can bring your, your recycles, recyclable stuff, but they're also having teams. If you're, if you got a Girl Scout troop or Boy Scout troop that maybe is looking for service hours, you can form a team to go along, and they all assign you to a, a strip of road. You can pick up trash and, um, help beautify the city that way. Um, also, in conjunction with that, there is the citywide community garage sale. So you can go onto the website, you can log in, they'll create a map. Everybody who has signed up will, will be shown on that map, and so that's another good way for you to clean out your closets in your garage. Um, other than that, I think everybody's covered everything. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Court. Uh, Mayor Pro Kim Harris.
Uh, just a few events that I attended the, uh, last couple of weeks. Uh, today went with, uh, Councilmember, uh, Court, and the mayor and staff attended the Berkshire Katy Drainage District Meeting this morning. Uh, good visiting with all the, uh, board members and staff from Berkshire Katy Drainage. Hope we can continue to do that in the future. It was great getting together since we worked. So, so many things are in conjunction together. Uh, also attended the virtual Young Ranch HOA meeting, Heritage Park Board meeting, and, uh, took a tour at Rosenberg Animal Control Center with Councilmember Robertson. A good time was had by all. Uh, state of county, uh, meeting last week, and the most fun was the Merrill Center hosted the Southland Conference, and as always, it's supported by the City of Katy, and, uh, my sixth grader had a, a, uh, great time and watched a lot of college basketball. So next year, hopefully, we're back to normal post-COVID and, uh, can have a bigger crowd and, uh, better, better attendance, but it was a good time and good basketball.
All right, we all are so on the ball, I have absolutely not one thing that I can add to that. So with that, it is five oh nine. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right, I heard everybody on that one. Becky did too. All right, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Y'all all have a wonderful week. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.